Morning, selectmen for our meeting on February 1st, 7:00 PM. Would everyone please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that, I almost said January, but I forgot we're already in a new month. Announcements tonight, we have Treasury Collective reminds town residents that third quarter payments were due today. Payments may be made at the Town Hall on Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, or may be left in a drop box outside the Town Hall door. 2016 dog licenses are available in Town Clerk's office. Town offices will be closed Monday, February 15th, in observance of President's Day. Town Clerk's office advised that nomination papers for town positions are available at the Town Clerk's office through February 9th, and must be returned by February 11th. Deadline to register to vote or to change party enrollment for the March 1st Presidential Primary is Wednesday, February 10th. Town seeks two volunteers to serve on the Finance Committee. Meetings take place almost every Wednesday evening, beginning at 6:00 PM from January - the Town Meeting in May - through the Town Meeting in May. Contact Town Moderator Les Davis or the Executive Secretary if interested. The Town will be auctioning off our surplus 1980 Seabray Ladder Truck on the online auction site, yinintabid.com. The auction started today and ends on Monday, February 15th. Caution to motorists, reminder that schools are closed during the week of February 15th through the 19th for winter recess. Please take caution on the roadways for children who may be outside and on the roads. And the recent DOR management report has been published on the Town's website. Next, we have the approval for minutes and warrants, and we have minutes from January 19th and January 25th, and both were at 7:00 PM. So is there a motion to approve the January 19th?
I have a correction on the second page, second paragraph, under New Business. First sentence, the word "leading" actually means, well, as I said, having a term charter, not leading a charter. The sentence should read, "The proposal indicates there are sixteen recommendations, many financial, and if the Town follows them, we will be close to having a term charter." So, and I've also verified that we have another individual, and essentially if you go through it all, we're ready for a term charter.
All right, so we can approve, is there a motion to approve the minutes with the correction that Mr. Repose made? Second, all in favor?
Mr. Baker, you up staying?
Okay, and the next, January 25th, Mr. Baker and Mr. Law were both absent, so is there a motion to approve January 25th?
Motion to approve January 25th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have anything.
We have no guest speakers on the agenda for tonight, so Board and Committee Department heads, we have Animal Control Officer. Gary?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, so where, two questions is, where do we stand with a kennel to bring our dogs?
We have a kennel.
We have one, okay.
We still, we still can use the Yorkshire kennel, but I'm also looking at an alternative.
Okay.
Should something ever develop where it's not usable.
Right.
So we always have something.
Because I understand the last time the Police Department tried to bring a dog to Aldrich Street, they turned us away.
She, from what I understand, she had a loose dog inside the kennel, and apparently, I guess it was an inopportune time to go up there, but, you know, she's running the business, can't be doing stuff like that.
Right, okay.
So...
We're working on a different facility?
An alternate, yeah.
All right. Okay, and then how do we stand with an assistant, because we're taking too much time away from the Police Department?
I spoke to somebody the other day that, apparently somebody's approached Helen. I spoke to that individual. The only thing I have is a list of the prior applicants.
Yeah, we haven't received any other applications.
Maybe I need to pursue this.
And how's the qualifications for that individual? How are the qualifications for that individual?
I haven't even gotten to that point yet.
Okay, all right.
I never speak to her on the phone.
Okay.
She does have some animal experience, but, you know...
Okay. She, he or she would need an LTC, license to carry, and also have to pass the court.
Right.
And, you know, we're gonna check the driving records.
Absolutely.
So...
Has she come in and asked her to see you, Helen?
Yeah, no, she hasn't come in.
All right, so, I mean, that's, those are as important as the other qualifications, you know, so...
Right, you know...
Okay.
We'll just keep looking, you know?
Yeah, and then, so aside of those two items, how is everything else? Quiet?
Quiet.
Yeah. Licenses are up to date, you haven't found any unlicensed. I know the Clerk's Office has been doing a superb job on getting all the licenses.
Yeah, we sent out a ton of fines.
Yeah, all right, good.
I got two residents that are contesting their fines, so I have to deal with that with the extra part.
Yeah, okay.
What is the fine? For an unlicensed dog, what is the fine?
Uh, fifty dollars. Thirty-five if it feels loose.
It's a lot cheaper to just get one.
A lot cheaper. Yeah, a lot cheaper, you know, and the most important thing is the rabies vaccination, above all, especially if it's a pet, you know, interaction with these animals.
All right.
But, you know, when sometimes things happen, and they're beyond my control, you know?
Understood, oh, I know, but as long as we're, when we catch it, we get on top of it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So, have you ran an ad anywhere else?
I haven't run an ad recently, we had run one before, before Jennifer applied. It is posted, it's on the Town's website. If you feel the need, I can certainly put another ad.
I was reading through, it looked like at one point you even had an ad on Monster. I was just reading through somebody there.
Yep, I can put it on there again. Mr. Chairman, I have a bit of laryngitis, so my voice comes...
That's fine.
I just wanted to point out, the reason why I have outsourced/regionalized on the agenda is during some budget discussions.
Yes.
There were some questions about if the Town continues to have issues filling the Assistant Position due to the needs during the daytime hours. Is it something we should look into? And the Finance Committee said that's, you know, up to the direction of the Board of Selectmen, so I didn't know if that was something.
I would agree with that, if the rest of the Board would agree with that.
I'll make that motion.
So, so if, within, I don't know, a couple, by our next meeting, if we have no applicants, I think we should look into contacting Town, some other communities to see if we could get daytime coverage. Yeah, it's basically your typical first shift forty hour, the forty hour first shift of the week that you can't cover, correct? So, all right.
I mean, I try to monitor the phone, my phone as much as I can, but, you know...
Yeah, no, I know, everybody's got a full-time job too, so, we understand that.
I've had a lot of difficulties with assistance over the years.
Yeah, oh, no, I know, that, we understand, that's why we're thinking of maybe outsourcing that certain portion of the day, you know?
I should hope.
So, while we're in discussion.
Your decision.
All right, so, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
I guess that's it, unless you have something you wanna, no? Okay?
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Anybody for public forum? Mr. Murray, you brought this letter in. Would you like to speak on it, or you just want us to have this on record?
Well, basically, I restated everything.
That we talked about last week. Okay.
I tried texting it to you, and it wouldn't help, it's an incorrect address, and I know I wrote both down, it didn't work.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's not on our agenda to discuss this, only if, and he spoke about it.
Under New Business, I have the zoning enforcement issues.
Okay, yeah.
We do have the building inspector and the fire chief here to discuss any zoning enforcement issues.
All right, so we'll cover this under that agenda. It'll, it basically fits in, it's, it'll work. Unfortunately, that's towards the end of the meeting, though. Sorry about that. Next, correspondence, none this week unless somebody picked up some information on anything over the week.
I did, but I could do that in seconds for him.
Okay, yep. So, next we have appointments and resignations, and the only thing on tonight's agenda is to create the Town Administrator Search Committee, so, and then appoint interested members. So, we've got eleven interested residents. I've got four, four letters, Mr. Thuar, Mrs. Coffin, Mr. Faulkner, I believe, has one. Oh, there he is. All right, Brian Faulkner has one, Judy Monroe and Claudette Barrett all have a letter of interest in, is that all of them, Helen?
As far as I know.
I don't know, you know of any others?
Just the name I gave, yep.
So, you wanna read that charter again, to create the committee, or, I mean, we do have it on the minutes.
Yep, there is a sheet regarding the committee where I kind of took all of Mr. Repose's suggestions and put it into one.
So, if you, this, it summarizes the charter you read the other evening.
Proposed committee, create a seven-member ad hoc Town Administrator Search Committee to consist of town residents with either experience in public administration, management in the private sector, or with equivalent or appropriate municipal experience in Millville. The charge would be develop a job description for a full-time Town Administrator based on available information and published material in a similar-sized Town, and with consideration given to Millville's unique circumstance and governance characteristics, the job description before posting the position will be requiring an approval by the Board of Selectmen. The target date is for February 16th. Develop, the starting, second point in the charge is to develop a starting salary and salary range appropriate for the position in Town Millville based on a candidate's credentials and experience in accordance with the Town's classification and compensation plan, and based on guidance and constraints as advised by the Finance Committee. Target date again, February 16th. Recommend, fourth, third point, recommend three to five qualified candidates to Board of Selectmen for interviews to be conducted by the Selectmen during the month of April. Target date, March 31st. The individuals indicating interest, Mr. Roland Barrett, Joseph Repose, Helen Coffin, Norman Thuar, Richard Crivello, Paul Ulette, Jerry Finn, Brian Faulkner, Tina Landry, Claudette Barrett, Judy Monroe. I would, at this time, my feeling is that I don't think anyone on the Select Board should be there on committee, but should be for, from the non-governmental residents, and so I strike my name from that list.
Oh, yeah, I can strike my name, that leaves us down to nine. Well, we've got some letters, some, we have four physical letters of interest. In the past, we've always took precedence to the physical letters of the four.
Mr. Chairman, is there a motion to first create the committee?
Yeah.
So, move.
Is there a second to create a committee?
I'll second it.
Can we put some consideration into...
Well, I think we could put maybe like a, just members, have additional members, you'd have, say, seven voting members and...
Well, I was gonna say, could we...
Because I don't wanna single someone out.
Could we put some consideration into changing it from seven to nine? We have nine willing bodies, it is an odd number, I mean, there are some I prefer over than others, but I don't think this is the time or place to get into some of those things. I think we have willing bodies, I think they're all capable, and I think some consideration in from seven to nine, they are just giving recommendations and final parts over, so...
I think that's actually a little more fair way than I was thinking.
I mean, I know we did the, I've done a few searches for the school committee, couple administrators and the superintendent, and Jerry, how many do we have? Fourteen on the superintendent? So, with a strong chair guiding them through, I think it can be feasible.
Yeah, and people have lives, if they, if somebody can't make a meeting, at least it'll be eight, you know?
Yep.
All right.
I also have the feeling that this is not a simple task, and we need to consider the work that needs to be done in addition to just bringing people together to make a recommendation, we need to consider the work that needs to be done in developing the description for the job.
So, all right, so, would, shall we amend the motion to a nine-member committee and leave everything else at that? Is that okay?
Make that motion.
And you seconded it, or John seconded it, is that okay, John? Yeah, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, now, we can point. Did you give me that back?
Yes, you did.
Good, well, here it is. I put my glasses on. Okay, so, all right, so, motion to appoint the following residents to the Town Administrator Search Committee. Helen, and if anybody would like to hold one, just yell "hold" and we'll go back, but Helen Coffin, Norman Thuar, Richard Crivello, Paul Ulette, Jerry Finn, Brian Faulkner, Tina Landry, Claudette Barrett and Judy Monroe. So, is there a second?
So, move, you made the motion?
Yeah. Motion as names I read. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. And Brian, would you like to?
Just wanna know when the last time you had too many volunteers?
Yeah, exactly. Last time? Maybe a cookout, you know? So, Brian, just for the record, just at some point, just give your letter to, and anyone else, just give your letter to Helen.
The telephone I used was your email to me.
That's fine, yeah, that's all, that's all we need, because that's what I did with Mr. Thuar, I emailed and I just forwarded it to Helen.
Mr. Chairman, as requested, our Assistant Town Clerk is present this evening.
Yeah, all right.
And before we go ahead, could we just maybe make a temporary chair? I make a motion for Jerry Finn for temporary chair for the sake of organizing the group, and then your group can go forward at their first meeting, but putting a person of charge to coordinate efforts.
So you'll be chairman for one night, or forever, if you were, if that's what...
As the chair, and then let your committee decide what you're gonna do from there, just for the sake of organizing and coordinating and hosting.
Somebody's gotta post the first meeting.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, so now with that, under that same agenda, we have the letter from, I don't know if everybody saw the letter back from the Town Council, so she laid out all the things we need to do, a vote by the Board of Selectmen to create the position is really null and void, it has to go to Town Meeting, period. We can do the Search Committee before the Town Meeting, no problem, we can interview, no problem. We can't enter a contract until the morning after the Town Meeting, if approved, unless the contract says pending Town Approval. So, little things like that. So Barbara is willing to come to our first, or maybe our second meeting, to go over all this, plus she's got more than just this to give us for information, just to make sure that we're on the right path, to meet with the Selectmen and the Search Committee. So, if you guys wanna meet first time, to just organize and figure out what the plan of attack will be, and then maybe the second meeting invite her, or if you want Helen to invite her for the first meeting, that's fine too, and then that way we can just jump, be known, know right away the proper direction that we need to go in. So, there's just a lot of red tape that she said we're gonna make sure we...
Well, I'm not sure if that's the charge of that committee, or if it's really the charge of this group, to make sure these dogs are in...
Right, but she'd like to meet with both, them and us, so if we go to their meeting, or they wanna come to our next meeting with, and have her come, she doesn't care whenever, she can make herself available to come and just explain everything that needs to be done, so that we make no mistakes.
It'd be nice if you could target one from the Monday.
Our next meeting, yeah.
It's a Tuesday.
So, we would invite you guys for our next meeting, which will be a Tuesday night, the 16th.
Do I do it during the meeting, or before?
Probably, she'll probably do it in half hour, 6:30 maybe.
Can we do a workshop primary meeting?
Sure.
See if she could come, either 6:00 or 6:30, and then we'll base our start time on that.
I'd rather do 6:00 and have extra time than...
If she can make it here from there by 6:00, that'd be awesome.
If for some reason the 16th did not work for her, is there a second option?
Um...
The following Monday?
Yeah, how about the following Monday, or, and if another day works, we can all just make ourselves available if possible. Mondays are always better to get Bob there. Mr. Baker?
The following Monday, I probably will be on a large boat.
Yeah.
I will not be around that week.
Probably.
You sure?
Yeah, he seems pretty adamant on that one.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so, that's the, I think that's it, as far as that agenda, I think we've covered it all.
I'm gonna swear I'm in the...
So now we're gonna...
Diane's gonna take over, however, you'd like to organize this?
Well, I wanted to print them out first, and then, do you want all to do all at the same time?
Yeah, if you can, sure.
Okay, let me just print these all out, and I'll need everybody to sign after you get that one, you sign it on paper, and we'll be good.
Okay, so when you come back, we'll hold the meeting for thirty seconds and let you do your thing.
Terrific.
All right?
Give you about fifteen minutes.
Sure, thank you. All right, next, Executive Secretary's report.
Mr. Chairman, the first item, a resident, or actually a couple of residents have asked if the Board of Selectmen would consider videotaping all of their meetings rather than just the regular meetings.
Okay.
The policy right now seems to be it's just the two regular meetings per month.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it, we'd have to organize that with cable, obviously. I know Tim's listening, so...
I'm for it.
Okay.
He gets paid.
Yeah, he gets paid, so...
So, can I have a motion by the Board then to proceed with videotaping all Selectmen's meetings?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the other few items are on the blue sheet that I handed you this evening, and I just want to let the Board know that the Highway Surveyor has advised that he's joined the Town of Bellingham in a procurement effort for Chapter 90 roadwork, so that bid is opening later this month.
Okay.
Regarding the land on Thayer Street and the developer, Vincent Cucoli, he's seeking a meeting with the Board of Selectmen and other departments to discuss some details of his subdivision and the approval by the Planning Board. On the second page, I've given you a little bit of information from Mr. Layden as to the reasons behind the meeting. Joe questioned whether the Board would like to meet confidentially with perhaps one or two representative members of the Board, with the Fire Chief and a representative member of the Planning Board, or if you would prefer to just hold it as an open meeting and invite Mr. Cucoli in.
Yeah, we could, we, a couple of us can go to the Planning Board meeting with him, it doesn't have to be at our meeting.
Well, their meetings are the same as your meetings.
That's true, I forgot, yeah, they're the same, so, yeah, we can do it.
What do you do with the whole board?
Yeah, the whole board, it'll be on camera, the whole Town, because really it's... Yeah, the whole board, it'll be on camera, the whole town, cause really it's, the whole town really should be informed on that anyhow, so.
And we'll ask the planning board to have representation, and we'll ask the fire chief to be here as well.
Yeah.
I'd agree with your motion.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had a, an inspection by the Department of Labor Standards, we received their report today, a copy was in your mailbox. There are six corrective orders that must be addressed by the end of this month, along with some recommendations. Many of those are easily completed in-house, I can take care of that. There are a couple that do involve an electrical issue, I will have to have electricians come in. And then the rest of those are related to the highway department, so I will give Brian a copy of the report, I'm gonna highlight the issues that pertain to him. So that was just for your information. The town officially became a community compact with the Baker-Palito administration, select Mariposa was good enough to go to Bellingham last week and sign that with Lieutenant Governor. The town's number one best practice that we had applied for was economic development for the use of one-eighty-one Main Street. The town planner, Joe Layden, has been very involved with that and getting that going with CMRPC, so he's volunteered to contact the state and chat with them about the town's best, you know, next steps to take in connection with that. So Joe was working on that. Mr. Reposa, when he came back from that community compact agreement, advised that the lieutenant governor had announced that day that there's gonna be an IT grant being released, and that was actually today. The state released an IT grant, it's a competitive grant, towns can apply for up to four hundred thousand dollars. And it's only for the towns who have a community compact with the state. So we wanna really jump on that, especially given the information in the DOR report, that our software isn't really up to par. My questions for the board are, how far do you wanna go? Do we wanna focus on the accounting and the collections payroll, or did you wanna really go for the gusto and upgrade all the software?
I think the best practice is to unify under one umbrella.
If we can get funding to do the whole.
My only concern was if, if we put in a grant application too high.
Yeah.
We might be rejected, I didn't know if we would have a better chance if it was, you know.
What was, what was the estimation again?
We're meeting with an IT vendor this Thursday to get a better idea of what the cost would be, but from the telephone calls I've made, it seems like each, for each application, and accounting is one, payroll is another.
Hmm.
Each, pretty much department is a different application. They estimate about fifty thousand dollars per application for the product and full implementation of it.
Yeah, right.
So if we were to go with just the two, the payroll and the accounting.
Be a hundred.
That would be a hundred.
And that's training too?
Yes. Does the grant states that partial payment or partial grants are awarded? You know, some it's all or nothing, and then others will say, if you are not awarded your whole, what would your top priorities be? Is there any wording within the contract? I read it today, I didn't see anything to that effect, you know?
Either all or nothing.
This, well, yeah, well, sometimes they'll say, we'll give you, what will you do if you're not gonna get your full amount? How would you?
What's your second choice? They don't have that.
You know, whether you're raising appropriate, capital planning it out, whatever, you know, sometimes they'll ask those things.
Good question, yeah, you don't wanna go in, like, what, being, uh.
Some direction here.
Oh.
Recently, I, I don't remember specifically the, the town's name, but that was one of their best practices listed, and I think if we model ourselves with that best practice, we'd stand a better chance of getting a grant.
There was actually information about that on the, um, the grant page today, and they said you don't have to have that as one of your best practices, as long as you have a community compact, there's no additional points given if that is one of your practices, so. That's one of the frequently asked questions. Well, it's not due to the twenty-nine, so.
Yeah.
I mean, can we hold it to the next meeting, get those hard numbers and see what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Put some thought and consideration into what department and which areas need the greatest focus at this point? Would the board like, um, the town accountant and I to sit with all of the departments townwide and see if they have any, you know, such as police, fire, public safety, if they have any software needs? Or do you wanna just keep it, the government?
We could look, I mean, cause if somebody's got a ten thousand dollar need, I'd wanna know.
I, I would want.
Now's the time to know about it, you know?
I would want it for baseline.
Yep. I mean, if, if, if we go and find out we need half a million dollars, um, I'd wanna know now, we'll go for as much as we can without looking, um, like, being glutton about it, but.
There are companies that would do this out of the cloud, which probably wouldn't be a bad thing.
Yeah, most of them are on the cloud.
They are, yeah. Actual security and all that stuff that you can keep up with.
Rich, you have a question?
Yeah, I think you're all headed in the right direction. You, you identify the total need for the town, then you strategize how much you think you can get out of this grant, what's the competitive number to submit?
Yeah.
And the remainder, you put in a capital plan, and you figure out a way later on down the road, at least you have a total plan for a total, total package to fix the whole town. Yeah, if you get a piecemeal, you know, all the better.
Yeah, baseline.
All right. Let's go that route.
We baseline, we don't have one.
And then the last item, it's not on my, uh, blue sheet there, but the complete streets listing also came out today, the state is offering funding.
Okay.
Um, for that, there are three requirements, one of which is that a representative from the municipality go to a training session, the town planner has offered to do that for Millville.
Okay.
And the other two requirements would be something the highway department would need to put together.
Okay.
So I will send that to Brian, and what that gives you is a fifty thousand dollar grant for consulting and four hundred thousand for roadwork. So if that's something he could apply for, that would be great.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Helen. Next, we have old business, the DOR financial report. One of the questions is to change the board of selectmen from a five-member to a three-member. And I, I think last week I, I stated that a five-member, you have, uh, I know a three-member's easier to get, you know, a full board, uh, but a five-member, I, I think brings, um, best, I don't know, for lack of better words, uh, more honesty to, and, and five, five minds working is better than three, you know?
The key word there is work. Preparation and the work.
Yep. But, uh, I, I think I'd rather have five minds and eyes on a project than three. It's the same reason why we just boosted up the search committee from seven to nine. The search committee proves that, that this small town can get the, the right amount of people to come onto a board and, you know. I know right now the selectmen have a lot more work, but, you know, normally, the normal day-to-day stuff, and once we actually have a town administrator, it's, it's gonna be, still challenging, but a, a lot of the work will be fun, you know, trying to create ways to, to bring in revenue and, and create, uh, projects for the administrator to do and, and just set goals for them, you know, it, rather than doing a lot of the stuff we do now, that's stuff that the administrator will be able to do, so. I think it'll be more appetizing for people to wanna get on this board. That's, that's my opinion.
I believe it's worthy of conversation, I mean, we were a three-member board community, we went up, took a long time to get up to five, we've been at five for quite some time. Not to say there's pros and cons to both sides, um, but I also think that we're taking a step forward with our administrator. I think there's going to be a learning curve as we get, um, the authority shifted in those things. I, I'd rather put my eggs in that basket at this point, and then maybe, you know, six months to a year from now, look at the board makeup, look at the civic, um, volunteerism within the community and the trends of that, because there are ebbs and flows, there are topics that motivate people to run and not run or be involved. So at this point, I, I'd rather just leave that on the table to deal with the most important things at hand, and then, not to say, not to discuss it, but, I, I mean, it's worthy of discussion, but I, I, I don't wanna put too much on the town voters in May. I wanna focus on what our most important need is and then go forward from there. So in my opinion, I would say, I'd, I'd still wanna talk about it, but I think we can wait for a future date for that.
I, I agree. I think we could be sitting here next year saying, yeah, we can go with a three-member board, or no, we don't, we wanna stay five, but we'll have a better idea next year at this time. Okay, we'll leave that. And then, as far as the authority of the town administrator.
I think that would be something that, um.
The search committee and us together.
Mrs. St. Andre could discuss, yeah, with the joint committee when she comes in, there are so many things she needs to know in order to prepare her article.
And I know, there was one other thing she said too, was even if we get town meeting vote to say yes, and the, and the administrator starts the next morning, their duties as an administrator would not go into effect till roughly November, once the attorney general approves town meeting. So, uh, so they'd be working, they'd, they'd have to know that until the signature of the attorney general comes, that they would basically still be in executive secretary power, uh, until, as long as they know that, well, getting into the job, there shouldn't be any issues with that.
So I would just ask the board to give some consideration and thought to that, so that when Mrs. St. Andre's here, the board has some ideas as to where you wanna go with that.
Okay. And that's it for old business, and before we go any further, Diane Lockwood's back.
Everybody's paper, you all have to sign. So would the nine members please stand up?
I know, uh, there's one member upstairs in the planning board meeting right now, so do her separate.
Yeah, and Tina will come down later.
And would you all raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
State your names.
Kerry Chamberlain.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
Comman upon me.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the town administrator search committee.
The town administrator search committee.
In accordance with the bylaws.
In accordance with the bylaws.
Of the town of Millville.
The town of Millville.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Next, uh, new business, we have the election warrant. So. Just lead, uh, motion to, uh, sign the warrants for Tuesday, the first day of March two thousand sixteen, from seven AM to eight PM, for voting for presidential preference, state committee man, state committee woman, and ward or town committee. And that, uh, again, will be at the St. Augustine's Church Hall Par, at the St. Augustine's Parish Church Hall on seventeen Lincoln Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the zoning enforcement issues, we have, uh, the status with the building inspector and the fire chief, um, we have budget needs for implementation and requests, and then we have the town moderator. I am also, so, chief, gentlemen would like to come up? Each take a seat, and we've got two hot seats tonight. So I know, um, I know you guys know what to do for the enforcement, but there's still some issues in, in, you know, what, what we're gonna charge for fines, and who's gonna do the collecting, and all that stuff is all.
Can we, can I say something?
Yes, yeah.
Can you start with one piece of property, cause I know there's a couple of them that you're gonna talk about, is that correct?
Okay. Yeah, so.
With no confusion, and I'd like to know where we stand and what the people are gonna do about it, so the residents know what's going on.
Sure. Uh, marked garage located on Cheston Hill, uh, today he had a court date, uh, was continued to February twenty-third, he is represented by counsel, so I can only imagine, Miss St. Eyes will have to get involved when that goes on before the judge. He was issued fines totaling eight thousand dollars, spoke to the district attorney, they didn't want me going there every day and issuing fines every day, because they're not gonna grant us that type of award if they find him in fault. They more or less told me he'd be given a warning, a date when to remove those cars, if he didn't do so at that time, he'd be fined, if he's found, in fact, in violation. So, that hearing's on the twenty-third, so whether or not we prevail is a, is a different issue, but I will have to involve legal counsel on, on some date.
Yeah, okay.
So that's all we can do for that. I, I look at the property almost on a daily basis, all the cars still remain there, uh, he's moved no cars. I did speak to him in person, he's aware of it, he believes he has a case before the court, he believes the board of selectmen erred in their judgment, and he's gonna contest, do him business at that address.
I have a question, are all these cars registered or non-registered?
There are non-registered vehicles. And there's nineteen, nineteen vehicles, two trailers, one motorcycle, that's about it. But there's really nothing more we can do, it's in the court hands.
He's well over the limit of a repair garage on how many vehicles can be.
We did exactly what the board of selectmen requested, we drew up a criminal complaint, drafted it, brought it to the court, spoke to the DA, it's in the court hands, like I said, uh, Mr. Smith out of, I believe, uh, Milford is representing Mr. Fernandez.
Okay.
And all we can do is wait till the hearing on the twenty-third.
Okay.
So. Yes, we got it done, and, um, it's, if he complies, we win or we lose, one of the two.
Okay, all right.
Uh, the second address would be thirty-one Hill Street, uh, given a fire perspective regarding that issue. We've gone there on four different occasions for four different complaints regarding illegal burning, on each occasion, occasion we have found nothing combustible, I mean, uh, I shouldn't say that, nothing hazard of hazardous nature being burnt. He is burning in a small fifty-five gallon drum, on two occasions it was actually food, on two occasions it was lumber or wood, uh, not, not hazardous waste, not building materials, nothing illegal. Uh, we've checked the location many other times without a complaint, and each time we have found nothing illegal going on on the premises, on the burning side. Obviously, if you take a look at the property, you will see that it's scrap metal type of business going on.
Mm-hmm.
I've been watching very carefully and noticed he has washing machines, water heaters, lawn mowers, grills, so he is picking metal. But from a fire standpoint, you know, that's not my issue as, as far as the man conducting the business at the address. My issue is, is he burning illegally, and what he, what is he burning?
Yeah.
So we haven't found any evidence, you know, there's been allegations made he's burning a wire or other flammable that are in violation, we haven't found that. Uh, we gotta be careful going onto the man's property with no reason, I don't wanna be accused of harassing him. I don't want to be accused of harassing the man. So we've checked the property on many occasions, and it's simply, every time we check it, we haven't found a violation. So.
Violation of the burning.
Of the burning, correct, of the burning only, not addressing the license because that's certainly not within my jurisdiction to take a look at.
So we have letters from Mr. Mars that lives on Hill Street. I don't know if you, would you like?
No, I'd like to see, I, I'm going to.
You can each have, you can each have one of these, and we can get more from Helen.
It's obvious that his business, I use the word business, is growing because his collection is growing of what he collects. It's getting larger every day and more condensed. I've seen that for the last four or five months.
Yeah.
Nice one.
I don't even know how he gets it there because we check him off, it just continues to grow. And so he's a classic picker, and so he's scrapping the metal.
Yeah.
So that's, like I said, a different issue from what I have to look at, I'm looking at the fire side. I simply don't find anything, what he's burning is, is legal to burn, and we don't find anything illegal. So, I do have the reports, so I don't really have anything else to say regarding what he's doing on that property from the fire side. And from the police side, there's, we don't have an issue with that, that's certainly not within my jurisdiction to determine whether or not he's a business.
Right.
So that's simply somewhere else.
Zoning.
Zoning, there you go, his zoning.
So he is in violation of zoning, having a business in a residential area.
Right.
I've been up there several times, talked to him personally, and said, you know, if it's visible from the street, you can't have it. And of course, that is totally visible from the street. I've issued him a ticket, and done that phone route, and that really, um, the only way we're really gonna enforce this is to take him to court, criminal action.
How many, how many tickets have you issued him, and what did it come to so far? Is it weekly?
No. I've issued one or two tickets adding to him, but it's, it's paper, and has no meaning to him. So, I'll, I will send him another letter, giving him seven days to respond. You can respond to the zoning board of appeals. If they, if he doesn't do that, then I can proceed again with the following letter that says, you haven't gone through the zoning board of appeals to reveal my decision. I'm pursuing criminal action, and that's the road we take down.
Okay.
Which is basically what they do with that. The situation with that is, um, probably should have legal counsel involved with that criminal complaint.
Right, okay, so.
It's, it's expensive, but it gets recouped.
We can't, we can't let it go, because then everybody's gonna start to, you know.
I mean, that, that's the kind of case though, too, is that some of these things have gone on for years and years, and you don't clean them up in a day either.
Okay.
But that's, that's basically how you have to do it, you know, court has the power to put you in jail or fine you.
Right, okay. I just don't want this thing just to.
I will.
You know what I'm saying, just go away, I want, I want to make sure we stay on this because the residents are not happy, and it does look like.
He's getting away with it.
He's get, I'm just not saying he's getting away with it. He's not in compliance with, with the, with the bylaws. That's how I look at it. Alright, he's not in compliance, and the neighbors put a complaint in, we see the violation, you see the violation, so we need to move forward.
I will copy the selectmen with all the letters that I received.
Alright.
And I think one thing we need to be careful of, I've heard in a couple meetings dating back, um, you know, that the fired upon, I'm not saying name, you know, but they're saying, well, when you burn, you know, make it look like a legal burn, or, oh, it can be here, but just cover it. I think we need to be careful as the community and the people who are going up there, and what we're saying is true to words because then what's relayed to the neighbors or the residents up there is like, well, they told me I just had to cover it. And the truth always lies somewhere between individuals. But I just want to be sure that our employees and our workers are very clear as to, like, this is a priority to have it cleaned up for both sites, and that we're going by the letter of the law and not finding loopholes for anyone to continue because they take out of it what they want to hear when they're, when you go up there.
When it's written, though, it's.
And that's, and I think that proof is right there.
We, we, yeah, we do respond, every time someone calls, we check the address. Um, like I said, every time someone calls, we find nothing hazardous being burnt.
Yeah.
So there's really not much we can do. It's a couple occasions of actually food on the grill. So, you know, I understand the smoke may have different colors to it, and that's why people may be calling, or maybe the smell is something different, the regular wood being burnt. But at the end of the day, if it's not there, I simply can't make it up.
Right. But as, as far as the zoning issue though, there's definitely violation.
Absolutely, that's.
But that's on my shoulders.
Yeah, that's, that's on the commissioners.
Business growing, I have spoken to the man myself, and it doesn't seem to go anywhere.
Yes.
Chief of Action. Four persons, his car, he is just downhill from me, and I don't, it looks like four persons, six persons, I can't remember which. I was just on my window, and a flash of light caught my eye. Swears, as my witness, that's why you had to be at least ten while being high. What would cause that, not regular burning? I didn't bother to call him, exactly, he'd be all that time you guys slept here, all we could see was that.
You know, I can't speculate as to what was in this container. It could have been grease, it could be anything. But the bottom line is, when we go, it's simply not there. Now, I'm not saying he's not burning anything he shouldn't burn, but I think, at the end of the day, they really have to continue to call us if they believe there's something illegal being burnt. We'll certainly check it out.
Could you help him have a scan or not?
I, I wouldn't know that.
So we're thinking he has a scanner, because every time, uh, the fire hat and the pitch show up, it seems we all covered awful, there's no, there's no issue. The smell, the smell is awful, because there's no way any worse, it can smell like that.
I've driven by and stopped without a complaint.
Yeah.
Thinking I'd catch him burning something, I haven't caught him.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know, you know, what it is inside that container, because it's a fifty-five gallon drum. It, you know, unfortunately, I believe he burns pallets as well, or pots of a pallet. You don't know if there's oil on that pallet, where it came from, from business, some business may have been automotive related, and it could be grease on the pallet, could be anything. Certainly, I just don't know, because I haven't caught him burning anything illegal. So, and I've looked inside, I've looked at the ashes, I don't see any metal in the ashes. So I, I, I think my recommendation would be to keep calling us when they see something, we don't mind going. Keep calling us, and we'll keep checking it out.
Yep.
So that's all I can say, just call them.
I think he's, he does it various times in his calls. One, I was about to put Brucey out, and I think, well, maybe you should put this time, because it's that, it's the water, it's makes it something.
Maybe you could be specific in your call, like the smoke is dark or black, or the smell smells rubber-like or plastic-like. So now that becomes an official piece of your phone call in, rather than, I think he's burning illegally. Then you, those claims are very specific as to what, what you're seeing, what you're witnessing. So that may, whether it helps us later in court or whatever, but I would continue to call, but be specific as to what you're seeing or smelling.
Alright, um, so, anything else on this property?
One step at a time.
Mr. Mars.
I just want some clarification on one issue. First of all, my understanding is that you're not allowed to burn a fifty-five gallon drum to begin with. Secondly, um, I do know, I've had some of the down drafts from that property, and it's pretty noxious. It's not just wood. I've smelled it three or four times in the last year. Third, if he is only to be allowed to run a business as long as it's covered over with top tarpes and a tent, I, that, that means we can't start, but we can see the tent, we can see the tarpes. That to me is not, does not go along with the rules and regulations of the zoning board. So I'm hoping that you can get some clarification, that he cannot run that business out of a tent. Because you can't run a business out of a residential property, you'd have trucks going in and out if they were unloading and loading. So, I do need clarification on that, and there's a lot of evidence, I think that somebody should get the wetlands map out, because I'm sure some of that equipment, a fifty-five gallon plastic drums, either close or on, I'm almost positive that they're trucking out on the wetlands.
Okay.
I think all of these things have to be addressed.
Is that within your letter? Because that could be forwarded to the conservation.
Just, just for your information, you can go and check the map yourself, it's open to the public, and they will give you all the information you need.
I understand that, but I know that when Roland lived there, there was an area to be told, we should be careful over there, because that's all wetlands.
That's gonna be on the map, that's gonna be on the map, everything's there, and you are open to that to get it anytime you want.
So what do I do when I find out that information that in fact he is?
Oh, that, that would go to conservation.
Which we, we have sent this to conservation already.
So then, and then, if you remember, the commissioner did say, in the, earlier in this portion of the meeting, that he's gonna send them another letter, giving them seven days to, um, set up a meeting with the ZVA. And if he, if he fails to set that meeting up within seven days, then we'll, we're gonna unfortunately have to go through the court system, and that's the proper channel, unfortunately, it's not the fastest channel, because they, they, they're very busy.
That's what he said, he is not in compliance, and he's gonna move forward to make it right.
He's not gonna allow a tent operation either, you know. If it's against the zoning, it's against the zoning, whether it's in a tent or in the open, it's not gonna.
I just had one, one question, Mr. Mars. I'm reading this letter, he mentions trailers on Old Cheston Hill Road. Are those the trailers in the parking lot, in Mark's Garage in the front of?
Okay, I was over there the other day, and I counted twenty-two vehicles.
Well, could have added one here and there. You gotta keep up with it, I gotta keep up with it. You know, he took a lot of photos, so what was there, he may have added another one.
Yep.
You know, he's still working there, so he comes and goes, so.
Yep.
You know, he'll have his day in court.
Yeah.
And we'll just figure that out, what we can do.
But he's, he's legal repair shop.
He is a legal repair shop.
And I, there is a limit on how many unregistered vehicles he can have for that.
That's.
Should be.
It's like three or four, right?
No.
Should be, it's a decision.
Yeah, but it's definitely not twenty.
No, they, they really haven't moved, so, he's aware.
No, I know, there's weeds growing around them, so they've been there for a long time.
He's not trying to disguise anything or try and hide anything, you can tell, he's very outspoken.
Yeah.
Like I said, he's gonna have his day in court.
Yep.
And that's when we'll decide who's correct.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's all. Yeah, well, it's the easiest way to put it, you know. He's, he's hired an attorney to.
So, um, yeah, alright, so that's those two properties, now how about Milk Street, what's?
I have one question. How do we keep abreast of what's going on and the activity, or challenge what's going on in the neighborhood? How do we keep abreast of what was happening? With letters, phone calls, or any of it?
We could.
The residents could contact the building office, Chrissy is here during the day.
Yeah, right.
And she's pretty familiar with what the building commissioner is, is doing.
Yeah, the building department secretary is here from nine to one, Monday through Thursday, and she can update you with anything that's going on, because.
I believe anything I send out is public record, so.
Yeah.
If it's requested.
Until it gets into litigation, everything's public. Once it's in litigation, then it'll be, not until the case is settled, but.
So.
Yeah, so she can give you anything that, that we give to them. Alright.
As far as Mark's Garage goes, the public, they could certainly go to court on the twenty-third, it's in district court in Uxbridge, and they can watch what occurs.
Right.
My experience is it'll be continued, it'll be continued several more times.
I know, that's the unfortunate, that's why, that's what I'm trying to come up with, court takes forever.
Because, exactly right, it could take five months to get it done. So, I'll certainly give reports to the board of selectmen if something occurs on the twenty-third.
Okay.
So, public will know. So we can do that every time there's an action.
Okay.
Simply give the information to the board.
Mm-hmm.
That's about all we can do.
Okay, and do we have any on, on Milk Street?
I looked up the previous building commissioner, or one from way back, that said that that was an established business and it is allowed. However, um, I could write a letter and say that that building official didn't have it right. That, you know, the original zoning allowed for a contractor to have a piece of equipment on his property to build his house, and to go from here to his job, develop it, and come back. You know, that, a contractor, not a corporation, or, you know, he was his own boss.
Right.
So this is a business that has more than one employee, which is not allowed in a residential zone. So I, that's how I would pursue that.
Do they have a business license from our town? I've never signed anything for that property, and I'm, I'm. I'm ten year, I mean, previ, back in the, you know, the late nineties.
There again, that would make it a legal business, and, um, since we zoned, we zon, made our zoning bylaws, what, two, two years ago? If it was illegal then, it's illegal now, so we can.
But it's not like he's pulled a, the business license, you know, there's some people who operate out of their home, they get the business license. They don't even have one of those.
Well, the, a business certificate with the, with the assistant town clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if.
That's really just for the name, that doesn't give him the right to run the business.
No, but I'm saying, does he even have one of those within the town?
That I'm not sure, I can check.
I don't, I don't.
What's the name, what's the name of the business, or Chrissy, I guess?
The last, the last name would be Carlisle. Mr. Carlisle.
Sixty-five?
C-R-I-S-L-E.
Six Milk Street.
Six Milk, right.
Milk?
Yes.
I don't remember conducting any inspections there, so I don't think he does.
And I know, I know one of the neighbors, years ago, I, because it caught my eye, and I was like, holy cow, because it was really cleared. Where before it was like a couple trucks, but at some point it really got cleared. And they said, well, yeah, there was a lot of wetlands, and then he just kind of pushed and covered, like, whether it was deemed wet or whether it was just kind of wet between the properties. But they pushed, and I said, well, you really need, I don't know, but you really would need to send a letter. And basically, it was kind of like, I prefer not to deal with the individual.
That, that was addressed, um, maybe, I think that was addressed three, four years ago, with Amy Southern, they addressed that. So I think he stayed away from that. That was on the radio inside, coming back maybe three, four years ago. So he's not there, not part anymore, but he's added certainly more trucks.
Can't blame him.
More trucks I've ever seen, a lot.
Well, the business is good, so. You can afford to buy a commercial property and add this stuff there.
But if he doesn't even have a business certificate, going into the name of a business.
I don't have any businesses registered on Milk Street, or under the name Carlisle.
I believe it's listed under the name of the lady.
But none for Milk Street, nothing on Milk Street. So not even having a business name, so to say I'm doing business, I was approved by the building inspector years ago, he doesn't even have a certificate for a business within our community.
Because all, all the clerk's offices, it's just that you're a DBA or wherever you are.
It's to maintain the address for your business.
Right, that's it.
But even still, if he says I'm doing a business, you would have at least that, the minimum. So not having that just says. So not having that just says, I'm just doing whatever.
Destruction work like that, excavators and stuff, doesn't fall into the home occupation. You know, you can be a carpenter, have a pickup truck.
That's your office.
At your office, and you're moving, you know, you're doing all your work, you're not having customers there, you're not having a lot of equipment there. No, so I just want to make that distinction, you can't have a business in residential zone if it's a quote-unquote home occupation.
Right, right, yeah, we understand that. We also understand that that's a little more than a home occupation. So, alright, okay, well.
Let you know what happens.
Yeah, see where we can go.
And I'll post you on, on Sixth Long Street too.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
But there are other other violations in town and I will continue to take pictures and send letters for those things too.
Alright.
Wrap it up. Like I say, it does take some lawyer's fees and some litigation and it's, that's.
Well, I mean, we gotta do what's right, and sometimes it costs money, but.
Mr. Chairman, I know when the building inspector met with the finance committee, they asked him if he had enough hours and.
Oh, yeah, right.
To do all this enforcement. Is that something you wanted to discuss with the board or?
Because it's budget season now, this is the time to.
Well, it's kind of a, a great unknown, because you can go to court and sit there for three hours and have your meeting, you know, your judgment there for fifteen seconds or whatever postponed. But you still wasted three hours of time.
What we're wondering is if, do you have enough time right now to do your day-to-day stuff? We understand, if you go to court for four or five hours, we're gonna pay you.
Right.
For that time, as, as if you were doing an inspection, your hourly rate, but I mean, we're, we're just talking about the hours under that stipend to, to get all your.
And, and my answer to that is, I, I really don't know.
Yeah.
Pretty new in the.
Yep.
You know, I've been on board for six months now.
Yeah.
So, I would think that we'll just have to see how it goes, but, you know.
Yeah, alright.
I tried to.
Because we don't want to shortchange you, we don't want to shortchange the town for you not having enough time, we don't want to shortchange you. You know, for your labor either, you know, so.
And, and I will, you know, submit my hours as I think that they are, I mean, I've done that before with, you know, going on inspections on Fridays or putting in some hours on Fridays, which is my day off in Uxbridge, but. So, once you get the form letters down, basically, it's, it's changing the name, changing the dates, including the pictures and, and, you know, so it could go pretty much standardized. But like I say, you do need the legal counsel with you in court, just to.
Okay.
I've been to court in Worcester, that's where it usually ends up, and Milford is there with their zoning enforcement agent and lawyer and, you know, three or four other people. To, you know, enforce some, you know, order or something.
Yeah, alright.
Uh, one more thing, Helen, I'm gonna need from Miss St. Nige, any piece of paper ever generated.
St. Andre.
For the attorney for Mark's Garage, whether from planning, from the board of selectmen, she's gonna have to have the entire package.
Yeah, right.
Like I said, he's represented by counsel now, so they're gonna request through discovery, everything we have. So I do have some, but I don't know if it's everything.
Okay.
Uh, we need to go, go as far back as we can.
What about the DVDs, his visits, his presentations to the board, select board?
Oh, yeah, he was here in a couple of meetings, on, on one or couple, and cable can produce those DVDs as well.
I would gather everything we possibly can, because it's, like I said, because he's represented by, by an attorney, he's taking it seriously. He's just not gonna allow me to go in there and present the case, he has an attorney to, you know, represent him and get his license back. So we need all the documentation saying why we.
I think we need our attorney there.
Yeah, we're gonna need our attorney, but she's gonna, she has to have that information before she walks into court.
Right.
Um, so she's probably gonna request it, so if we can get the early jump on that.
Okay.
And get that information.
And you'll be in touch with her yourself.
Yes, if you can get it all over to me, I'll speak to her directly. But I don't know what's out there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, before the building commissioner leaves, during the budget meeting, the finance committee was questioning his ability to keep going with the enforcement if it, if it needs the next step in going to court. And Mr. Lynch seemed a little hesitant with proceeding to court each time without the board's support. So is it just for his benefit, is it the general agreement of the board that he should proceed to court and with town council on every enforcement issue that he finds? Or would you like to address them on an individual basis?
I think, I think personally, I mean, I don't know that particular job that well, but I think it makes sense to have him with the legal counsel at the court date.
His discretion, right? He'll know whether he's legal or not, so it would be his discretion, I mean, sometimes a court only doesn't legal him.
That happens sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, you can always be surprised when, thinks they're gonna, you know, postpone it and then they don't, and then you're caught there representing yourself.
On this, my opinion is, you let Helen know that if you are bringing legal, at least we know where we stand with.
You'll know too, court dates and everything else, so.
Yeah, that's how I would leave it, you'll know, I mean, but it's gonna be your discretion, what you need and what you don't need, I mean. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah. I mean, you know better than us if you need to be there. And I mean, I think, you know, we hired you to, because you know your job much better than we do, so.
If you're looking for our support, you have the board's support.
I think, I think one of the problems.
Do you all agree to that?
I think one of the problem has been, is that the zoning bylaws have not been enforced. And then we are, we are left with these bigger messes than if we had them off at their first violation. So if we as a town have put these zoning bylaws on town meeting floor and accepted those, then we need to be ready and prepared to enforce them for the whole community. So I don't have a problem with going through to court, because that's, that's what we've, you've been charged by town meeting vote when those bylaws are accepted.
Yep.
And the cost that comes with it hopefully will recoup when we are successful in court, so.
I've all support.
Support, so, alright, thanks, thank you. Alright, next we have legal requests from Mr. Davis, our town moderator.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Mr. Board. Les Davis.
Sorry about the long wait.
That's alright, no problem. The reason I'm coming to you tonight is I'm requesting, I've made a request of you, and I'll explain my reasoning behind this, I requested to contact town council in order to determine, I would like to see us elect a, an assistant town moderator. I know we can do that at each and every meeting, we have that, I have that authority to ask that a town, assistant town moderator be, be appointed or be elected. My question was, if we ask the town meeting residents to elect an assistant town moderator, does it have to be at each and every annual meeting? Or can we do it one time for a three-year term? And, because at an annual town meeting, you can't tie the hands of a future town meeting or the residents of a future town meeting.
Right.
And so, so to speak. So that, that was the question, was to whether or not we could, we have to do it each and every town meeting? Or, you know, one, one time at the annual town meeting and put him in for one year? Or can we vote to put him in for three years, or her? And so that was my request to the executive secretary, she was hesitant about forwarding it on to the town council because she didn't want not do that without your permission. And I can understand that, okay? I know that we've spoken before and you've given me the authority to go directly, directly to town council and just inform the executive secretary. But I wanted to run it through her first, so to speak, because they're more, you're, she's more familiar with the budget than, than I am as far as your line item and your legal services. So I didn't, I don't want to jeopardize your, your line item for a legal counsel.
I think we're good for this, yeah, huh, Helen? We're close?
We're not as good as we've been the past few years.
Yeah.
I don't think this is a, going to be a long.
I think it'll be a very short.
A very short inquiry, yes.
Yeah, it'll probably be an hour charge and.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Yeah, and we just changed and we're in lower prices now, right?
I'll make a note to approve the request.
Any others? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, also along those same lines, I am requesting your, your opinion as the board of selectmen. I'm thinking about submitting an article for annual town meeting. For an article for a position for assistant town moderator to be placed on the ballot. And we establish both, we elect both a mod- a town moderator and assistant town moderator at every three years. That way if the town moderator is sick, comes incapacitated, do whatever, the assistant town moderator can step right in. Plus during the meetings, they can, they can, one can run some of the articles, another one can run the other articles and have both of them keep up to date on things.
Now, would it be a good idea to stagger the years? So that in the event you get two brand-new electees, one, at least one of them would know what's going on.
I think that's, I think that's, I don't think the term has to run coinc- you know, coincide one with the other. I think they can be staggered, yes.
Every three years.
But, but I think it has to be every three years for each one of them.
Right.
Yes.
And then that one, so however we gotta word it, so.
Yep, so I was wanting to see what your opinion was and your recommendation, if you like the idea of your.
I think that's good. Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll give you more help.
Okay.
Right, because you get paid a lot.
Are you gonna split your hundred dollars?
That would go into the town moderator budget.
They'd have their own, they'd get fifty dollars?
They, uh, the town moderator, assistant town moderator, al- operate under the same budget. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Diane, one of the map claudettes, yeah, she was one of the, you'd like to swear her, right? Thank you. Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming. Oh, wait, Joe, you had that other thing you wanted to go over on the members' forum? We were talking about it before the meeting.
Well, for the select board, I just had an announcement.
Yeah.
I had a couple, but the, the, the announcement I had on the compact was pretty much covered. But I just want to mention that last Thursday evening, I attended the school committee meeting. And basically it was involving.
I can't hear. Paul. Paul, can, you guys go on the hallway because John can't hear. Paul, hold on, hear Joe, because we're still having a meeting.
Basically, the elementary school president, uh, principals came and made their presentation. But prior to the meeting, Superintendent Himmelberger saw me and he approached me and he said, I was thinking about you. He said, we're gonna do a maintenance tour of the elementary school on tomorrow, which is Friday at eleven. And he said, you're welcome to join us. And so I volunteered to do that, and we did. And I took some notes, and this is, this is all having to do with this budget season. And just to prepare the town, uh, finance committee and the select board. So, now I'll go through this real quick. Uh, the first area of concern was the student drop off area in front of the main entrance. There's, there's plow damage there, the curb, roadway, and the concern there was that, particularly for the smaller children getting out of cars and the like, if an injury were to occur, a claim resulted from that. The principal wasn't sure if that was on, already picked up on an insurance inspection report. And if it had been, we'd be, you know, we'd be responsible or liable for the, for the injury. So that was the main concern there. The roadway condition at the rear of the school is in much disrepair. The surface is all broken up, when areas sunken in the wet weather, it floods out, so small vehicles can't pass through there.
Well, my question, Joe, on that, is they use that as the main roadway. So a parent pick up, the parents don't have to wait for the buses, they drive around on the bus, walk through the back and out. But that road, I've always said, never looked like it was constructed for the, that purpose. And I know I'm gonna lose a lot of mommy friends for saying this, but I don't.
With a fire access.
Yes, I don't think that should be a daily access, drive around kind of thing, because that, I mean, you look at that road, it's just.
It's not a road, it's a fire road.
But that, every, so you pick up your child, if the buses are loaded, you can't pass in the circle. So they go around the whole school, they come out at the preschool area and they leave. That is used as a daily, daily, not in the mornings, but in the afternoon, that is the, that is the route for all of the parents leaving. So that roadway, um.
Why don't we have the chief take a look at that and like, let him make a determination?
What are you, what are you speaking about, I just want.
The back of the elementary school, by the back of the park where the parents drive at the end of the day? They're saying that, that roadway is, the condition of it is not good. But I can, I don't think that roadway was constructed for the purposes being used today.
It's narrow.
Could you give us your, walk there and take a look at it?
It's really beyond our control, the school department makes the decision to allow the parents to travel behind the school. And the reason why they do that, when the buses line up, here's the reason, the buses line up, there's about five buses.
About five.
They all turn on their reds, and from that point on, no cars are allowed to pass. But yet the parents have already picked up their children, so now with the bottleneck, there's nowhere to go. So they allow the parents to travel through the back, around the back of the school and exit out the side. It alleviates the traffic, it alleviates the wait, because no one wants to wait. And you can't certainly go against the one way, so the only way to allow the traffic to move on is by the back of the school. A lot of parents bring their kids and pick them up on a daily basis.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's right, Ron, what I'm saying is.
But if we make that as fire access.
Right, right. That would be, it should be fire access only.
Yeah.
And not for mommy's cars and everybody else.
I mean, it's not that much, I don't know what the repair is, but we'd have to repair it to the state for daily travel, not for emergency access.
The problem with it is very winding in the back, it's not a straight line or a simple curve. So I, I have to agree, it probably shouldn't be used for that purpose.
Then we need to make it so they don't use it.
You know, that's something to work out with the school department.
Yeah.
I don't know how to go about stopping them from.
But I'm just saying, you know, when.
Back of their school.
When we talk about the state of the, maintenance of the, I think that's one that we need to look at.
I, I didn't mean to carry it out with the.
No, sorry.
I'm gonna mention the things that we're gonna be facing.
Yep.
Just the only, just keep in mind that by allowing cars to travel behind the school, it eliminates a lot of frustrated parents from waiting for the buses.
So what's it gonna cost to fix it?
Once the first group comes out, the buses all turn their lights on, so they have to load all the grades.
Well, you know what, that's a good thing because it's safe, and that's the way, that's the law.
I agree, I understand.
So, they're gonna have to be patient.
Okay.
All right, so...
But I just think we have to look at the cost of that and what our purpose of that roadway is.
Let's, let's do that.
I, I think Joe's, uh, purpose though is to just let us know what we're facing for financials.
And also, in that vein, uh, Mr. Langto is, uh, discussed this with the Highway, uh, there. And, and he was told at one, at one point in this process here that, uh, the roadwork needed at the school would have to be done in four stages. And it's been a while since, uh, Mr. Greento, uh, Mr. Langto has, uh, received any input from, from Highway. So, that's it, that's all I have to say.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good news on the, uh, ten thousand gallon oil tank. The reason it wasn't holding pressure was a leak in the line, uh, but...
Above ground?
Above ground at some point. I mean, uh, going forward, perhaps a replacement should be in a heart-ground tank.
Capital project.
A capital project, and that's my, that's my point exactly. We should be putting, uh, including this in a capital project going forward. Maybe the three or four more years or whatever, but, uh...
Do we know for a fact that the, the cost of that tank would be less than twenty-five thousand? Because I thought we had gotten an estimate and it was less than twenty-five thousand, which put it back on the school. Does it, is the cost higher than twenty-five thousand for a ten thousand gallon tank?
Uh, I wouldn't know, but I don't remember the, that estimate being more than that.
Mr., uh...
You?
No.
I don't remember what it said.
I think it went back to the school.
Right, because if it was more, I would've already submitted.
I do know that, uh, the cost of the electronic equipment to monitor the level in the tank really indicated to me it would cost about eleven thousand dollars just for that.
That's not built into the new tanks now? Or it's additional equipment?
No, if they would do it on, on this tank.
Oh, yeah, on this tank.
Well, if your new tanks are double-wall tanks anyway, you can't buy a single-wall tank.
But the general consensus was that that tank is probably good for another five years. Press suppression water tank, terrific news. The consensus there was that, uh, it's, it's good to go provided that, uh, North Wa, uh, North NWS continues with their two-time-a-year inspection.
I think that was for three to five years, if they kept up with the inspections. But I think five years, we're gonna have to start looking at replacement.
Floors, uh, front office, principal's office, and reception area, uh, needs to be recompeted. It seems to be held down with duct tape. We brought that up. Front, front door entrance vestibule and the side door by the cafeteria vestibule, that rug has, uh, should be replaced. And I think they're gonna do that in the routine, some maintenance spec.
Is that a safety concern or, or cosmetic?
The one in the front is all rippled.
All right, okay, so that's different. A cosmetic?
No.
It's a trip fall.
You know? Don't work that.
It's twenty years old. After twenty years, you sometimes need a new rug.
Yeah, 'cause it is approaching twenty-five years, I think, now.
Ninety-two we opened, yeah.
Okay, the next, next thing, it's a big, big deal, is classrooms. Uh, re, re flooring them. Mr. Langto had it scheduled to do four classrooms per year over a period. And approximately annual cost would be sixteen thousand dollars. Listening to, uh, Mr. Hemel, Himmelberger, he said, "Well, we probably could save a lot of money if we get them all at one time." But that would be a capital expense.
Because then we'd be paying for it. Because then it becomes a capital expense.
So, he was preparing the, uh...
The guys, they would, the School Committee would save a lot of money.
As of late, the last few years, especially doing stuff with, with weatherization and that kind of thing. They have window problems there with leakage, they're not closing right, the plastic guides are breaking. And, uh, I mentioned that MSBA, if they plan to do anything with, with the windows, they have a program to, to take care of that type of issue. Big surprise here, the building's fire alarms and chief might be interested in this need to be upgraded.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I'm not understanding.
What? Why do they need to be up?
I, I don't know, but that's, that's the comment they made.
Who, who made, do you know who made the recommendation to them?
Uh, no, I don't.
I'd like to know that.
But again, uh, he's, uh, Alan Himmelberger indicated, he said, "Well, I think MSBA has a, a program to cover that."
If they wanna pay for it, so?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Just letting you know, that's it.
Okay.
Other, uh, other implications on our budget planning for this year. Chapter seventy-eight, uh, the Superintendent was, uh, not too pleased with the, hearing the fact that chapter seventy-eight was only being increased one point six percent. But we're gonna end up paying for it anyway in terms of, uh, unrestricted government aid. It's increasing to four point three for local communities. So, give us a little bit more money, so we can put it back. Transportation's, uh, transportation aids for a few, uh, out-of-district students, that's not gonna change at all. And the final budget presentation, uh, the total budget presentation will be made to the School Committee on, on the eleventh.
Did you say May eleventh?
No.
I think, 'cause our meeting's before that.
February, February eleventh.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that's a Thursday night.
And Superintendent indicated that he would contact, uh, Mrs. Coffin for, uh, to set up a date to meet with the Select Board. That's the news from the top of the hill, S Street Hill.
So, so on March seventh, I saw through the parents' group that, um, Dr. Himmelberger is having a... Hmm?
Mister.
Oh, is it doctor? Mister. Is having a state of the schools. So, he's having dinner for the residents at Millville Elementary. And he's going to give a, um, a presentation of where the school stands. So, that may be interest, we have a Selectman meeting that night, but it may be interesting to hear that presentation or hopefully they're taping it and...
This is supper with the Superintendent.
Supper with the super.
What date is that?
The seventh of March. I think it's at seven o'clock at night, 'cause I, I noticed that we have our meeting and we wouldn't be able to attend. So...
That'd be interesting.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it would.
So, well, if it's, if it's gonna be in the auditorium, we could videotape it ourselves.
Well, the, the, the...
But I'd be here.
He'd be here.
And you're a lone ranger, right?
Well, I guess I can get Jesse, see if he's available to do it.
Well, I don't know even if we shifted our meeting for Tuesday of that week and if we wanted to pop up or, or ha, hold it earlier or, I don't know. It's something to think about. They're, like I said, they're, they're doing dinner for the residents and doing the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, it'd be interesting to see, 'cause I know their, their thought process of possibly regionalizing from pre-K all the way up to twelve is something that they've been looking at, so.
So, maybe, uh, we could consider moving our meeting up a day.
Or earlier, depending on what the agenda, if it's light, we'll get some more information. I'll put it on the next agenda.
We can't vote on it now, really.
I'm sorry?
We, we can't vote on it now, really.
No.
No. Because we, this isn't on the, this is discussion.
I don't wanna push it back for, you know, not have Bob there if we're gonna be dealing with some other issues, so.
Yeah, right. Okay, very good. That was it?
That was it.
Okay. All right, so our next regular meeting is, uh, February sixteenth at seven P.M. And we'll be doing signatures next and then we will adjourn immediately after.
Yeah, she gave me all those, I don't know why.
I've got a question for you, Ed.
It's with your email.
'Cause I know you're a professional at getting the New York City.
Oh, okay. Let me just make sure I'm not going crazy. Chief, yeah? No, Friday?
I'll check when I get back.
Oh, this isn't...
I got the original.
I'll check it again, Keith's gonna follow up with the...
Yeah, the one you sent me.
Keith's gonna follow up, follow up the fireworks.
Did you see if I would follow up? And how you're firing?
Yeah, okay, I'll, yeah, I'll check it.
Okay, that would be great.
The organ, the, the organ trust, we are eligible.
Yeah, of course. Preferably not Friday night, but, uh, any time, yeah.
Three of these coming.
Really?
If we follow her recommendations and what we wanted to use her on, it should be really well.
We got a letter from...
It really depends if, um, it's on the White House today, making a mail to Helen for Obama.
If it's up at the Town Club to see if a certain room is open.
It's like forty-eight hours.
Oh, for that, yes. They'll only schedule like sixty days out.
Yeah, to post a meeting.
So, I'll, I think I do have to post the agenda following that as well.
I'll send it just from one meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, no cookies.
You want these for the...
Please, for...
Yes.
Would you sell those?
We'll never get that far.
I'm trying to pull up her name, her email, 'cause she sent it to me.
Okay.
The service... She wasn't here tonight.
Would you get the peanut butter ones?
There you go.
Helen, if you can find all the information you possibly can.
I'm not getting connections.
I know if we had them in the front office, they would only last five minutes with you.
I know the filing came over, we pitched off the filing.
All right.
Put a bunch of boxes.
I can imagine you did.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker, was it the March seventh meeting? He won't be here.
That is a...
Mine is the first one in March.
It's, you're going on a cruise, February...
Okay, that's a Monday, yep.
I had a comment on it, but...
Well, a lot of people were posting. We gonna? No. Can I just sign a bunch of this? Oh.
Seven of them.
Seven of them, okay.
How many is there?
Seven.
Seven.
That's what she gave me.
Any more feedback from the guy up in the hill with the fire truck?
Joe? I missed the last one. No, he was very respectful and polite and accommodating when I spoke with him. I, we sent him the certified letter.
That's a nice savings.
Motion adjourned.
We need it too.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.